I'm not sure.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be recorded.
Okay, alright. Sounds good. Chris, this is Josh Farmer. He's our park super, right?
Yes.
Or park lead or park super?
Yeah, the park supervisor, yeah.
Nice to meet you, Josh.
Nice to meet you.
How long have you been with Manitou?
Um, just over a year.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so.
I think I saw you pu- I think I saw you putting up that pollinator fence in Shriver Park.
Driver, yeah.
Your beard was a lot shorter. Yeah. Let's see, so. I'm think- I'm thinking, well, well, maybe we don't need to have a quorum tonight. But it would, it would just be four people, four of us really, that would make up the quorum. So. We'll see who else shows up. Have to wait for Robin and Mia anyway. How's your day? How's your Monday, Chris?
It's okay. I'm not feeling that great. I got my COVID and my flu shot yesterday, so I'm just kind of out energy.
Yeah. Alright, Anthony's here. Hi, Anthony. I, I hope Robin and Mia got the link. Mia's trying to find it. Julian didn't send it to, to them.
I can try to forward it.
Uh, Julian is gonna send it.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if not, I can send it. It's kind of vital piece of our meeting, isn't it? Okay. Let's see here.
Rick, can you turn on this la- lamp and the lamp over there for me, please?
Both of them?
Yeah. I need some light.
I'm just getting some house.
Light up my life. How did those white?
Eight, we have. Okay. That's okay. Our, our pair of meeting for October twenty eighth, which is a special meeting, twenty twenty four, uh, will be called to order now. Uh, I'll take a quick roll call. Jan Johnson is here. Chris Bro is here. Rebecca Wood is here. Um, I am here. Anthony, did I say you? Okay, great. And then we have Noel Seppi. So.
She's with us.
Okay. Yeah, so I could say, oh, is this someone who wants to join Para?
We told her we were, she was gonna have to present tonight. Just kidding.
She can, we can, we can be her guinea pigs. Okay, okay, uh, can I get somebody to approve the agenda for tonight? I still move. Okay, Jan moves to approve, and I'll second that. And with that, I'd like to re- move right into the overlook park presentation with Ford Coppola Mac, Mia and Robin.
Awesome. Thank you for having us and thank you for modifying your schedule to keep us on schedule for this project. Um, we're gonna, you got the the information that we sent your way. We're gonna walk through that. Um, we've kind of made a couple tweaks that we realized were um, needed some modification, but anyway, we're gonna walk through that um, analysis and we're gonna talk about some of the findings that we heard during the in-person meeting and some of the information we've dug into a little bit further for kind of more context around the site. Um, but the goal tonight is to really strategize moving forward, what amenities and kind of how the design wants to progress, because our next step will be developing a preferred concept plan. And um, that's what we'll want to do in our next step, and that's the plan we'll bring back to you for your review next time. So that's, that's our goal for today. So with that, I'll let Mia walk through the analysis information.
Great.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Well, thank you again for, I know there was a little bit of scheduling conflict to get this meeting um, on board, but we really appreciate to keep us on track and on schedule. Um, we're really happy to share the community engagement results from both the in-person workshop and the online results. Um, this is just a little summary of all the different events that we had and um, just a little bit of input, uh, analysis of just schedule-wise, what's, what's happening and what's coming up, so. Um, just as a reminder of what we shared at both the in-person event and online, option one ripple and rhythm, variety of different amenities, um, with parking along sort of the south side of that north portion, and also having a little bit more of a water-themed focus on this one. Um, some imagery to go along with that first concept ripple and rhythm, uh, various foot bridges, um, habitats, sound therapy, uh, stormwater, rain barrels, um, composting toilet, uh, rain chains and rain drums, all kinds of really great little amenities. Concept two was a blossoming journey, a little bit more plant-focused and celebrating, uh, garden spaces. So this one had the parking along the west side of that north portion, and this one also had a little bit more of a formalized gathering space and uh, different arrangement of shade structures and walkways. Uh, blossoming journey imagery, so we have some similar things happening, but we had some different amenities like kinetic, kinetic wind sculptures, we had some swing benches, um, different custom carved wood features, the larger open spaces like I mentioned, and um, some rope and wood barriers, things like that that vary a little bit, but um, a little bit more focused on community garden spaces. And then the last one was artful history, and this one had parking, sort of a ninety-degree parking along the west side of the space, but having that figure eight loop that takes you throughout the entire space with some custom shade structures, um, some unique uh, plaza spaces with the indigenous, uh, north, south, the east, west symbology, um, some raised garden beds, um, some different berm spaces and playing with the topography a little bit on this one. And some imagery to go along that one, so we had um, oh, some birdhouses as well and different amenities that are kind of customized and unique that also help tell the story of the history through art and um, etching features. Okay, so on to the in-person questionnaire. Um, this is collected from all the different tables and from in-person conversations that we had, and from the different tables that voted, uh, the artful history came in a little over half, and then blossoming journey and ripple and rhythm came in third. Um, this is sort of the tallied up in-person questionnaire questions as people tick marked them. Um, so the top ones were custom shade structures, large group areas, lookout point and wind sculptures. And this is sort of that imagery in order of uh, what those results were, so shade is pretty popular and admiring views is pretty popular. Uh, dot voting, we'll just jump right to the results. Um, we we had um, a variety of different results that came in for that, but we basically the ones that came in first were sound therapy instruments, custom shade structures, native botanical gardens, and then formal gathering spaces, wind sculptures and composting toilet. So that's the dot voting specific results. And I know I kind of browse right by this one, but all of these uh, in-person other idea comments were typed up and they're at the end of this presentation. Um, so as far as the online results, we had a little bit of a different uh, turnout as far as what the favorite concept was, and just to mention, we had forty-two people that responded online, which is pretty decent. Um, we had the uh, concept one, which was ripple and rhythm, came in as the most favorite, but then concept two and concept three kind of tied, so um, kind of all over the board as far as everyone's favorite, but a lot of the comments kind of reflected of um, a lot of different overlapping themes were great. Um, so there are some amenities that are in each one that people really liked. I think that's what's kind of skewing the results a little bit. Um, this was the amenities voting from online, so the top twelve Native American ethno-botanical gardens came in first, lookout point, formal gathering spaces, uh, bee and insect habitats, nesting platform for the hawk, which is not, not the right photo, but nesting hawk platform, um, wood viewing deck, sound therapy, composting toilet, and then garden spaces, rock formations and educational signage and art and trails. Um, this was just a little wordle of the different responses and the most commonly used words. So just to kind of break this down a little bit, we had general park comments, trails and parking, um, and community connectivity and neighborhood impacts all kind of in one general park comments and one maintenance questions and comments and one, and the rest were kind of either in-person comments or non-park comments. So I'm not gonna read through every single one of these, but I'm just gonna highlight some main things that we saw sort of repetitively that came up. We had um, shade come up as a very highly desired amenity. Um, helipad, why do we have a helipad? Uh, that was kind of a question that was repeated. Um, accessibility and connectivity, so making sure that, you know, people are able to access the site both by foot, by bike, by car, um, and some questions that kind of pertained to some of those. Um, people really seem to like the planting and attracting of animals and keeping that into the general theme overall. Um, there were some comments that were about gathering spaces and making sure we integrate art and being able to have some larger events that happen there. Um, water was a concern that was brought up a few different times as far as how are we gonna water these plants? Um, sound and noise concerns was brought up. We had a couple longer comments, um, just in summary, some thoughts about the helipad and some history behind that one, so I really appreciated reading this particular person's comments and then um, just some general comments about, you know, these con- these concepts are really great, but making sure they're long-lasting and vandalism is something that we have to consider and make sure whatever we put in this park is gonna stand the test of time is basically what this person is commenting on. Um, and then parking, that was definitely one other comment that came up. Um, making sure we're kind of minimizing parking and not encouraging a lot of people coming and parking and using the restroom and taking over this space that aren't there for the park itself. Um, maintenance, how are we gonna maintain the site, safety, vandalism, comments to think about. Um, that was not really pertaining to the park. This is a lot of in-person comments that we took notes during the actual discussion portion of the community workshop, so. Um, a lot of comments about the restroom facility, about uh, water, making sure we're very sustainable on the site. Um, making sure we really appreciate the views and provide artistic elements and making sure it's a safe place for the community. Um, and also respecting the people that live in the vicinity. I think that was a few different comments and making sure our trail connections to the rest of the community makes sense. Now, I know I flew that, flew by uh, that entire presentation, but I just wanted to summarize, I know you've all had a chance to kind of read through it all, but those are some of the big takeaways that we had from all of the results, and um, we've kind of talked internally about um, some recommendations and next steps, and we've kind of dug a little bit more into the property itself and how it connects to the rest of the community. Um, Robin, did you want to share your list of your top um, amenities?
Yeah, I think there were a lot of really good discussions in person at the meeting as well as the comments online of, you know, a lot of the things Mia highlighted, but you know, again, the big things of you know, safety, making sure it can be maintained, um, access, just it came up a lot, parking and, you know, multimodal and, you know, people like to walk and hike in the community and having access in that form was brought up a lot. Um, we, based on some conversations, uh, we dug into that a little bit more as Mia said, but all, um, actually, Mia, if you want to let me share quick, I will first hit on the combined, so since we sent you this information, what we did was just kind of what was the combined in-person and online top twelve amenities? Um, because they do shift depending on, you know, in-person looked, looked a little bit different than online. And um, so I just wanted to go through those quick, so native ethno-botanical gardens was top one all the way across the board. Sound therapy came in second. Um, formal gathering space, third, composting toilet, fourth, hot nesting platform, fifth, custom shade structure, sixth, rock formation, seventh, integrated art, eighth, and shade structure with seating was ninth, educational signage, tenth, um, crusher finds trails, eleventh, and uh, large community tables was twelfth. So those are kind of the top twelve amenities that we got as a combined um, between the online and in-person. So that's really helpful just for us to kind of understand, like, you know, holistically based on the information we received, what um, the direction is going, and I think honestly, they really do emulate the conversations we heard as well as the comments that are in there, the general comments um, that are in there as well. So another thing I wanted to share is, this is something that we put together since the in-person meeting just to kind of better understand some of the stuff that came up. One of the conversations that came up at the in-person meeting is, um, what, what about, um, abandoning Topeka Avenue? And what happens if you do that? Does that help this project holistically? And I mean, with a kind of a quick analysis of that, I think it does. This is from the, um, kind of the online map that the city has, but, and I might switch over here really quick, just because it's a little easier to see. So if
Robin, can I break in here for a quick minute?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So Save the Flats had, um, already taken that issue to city council to ask if, if they would vacate Topeka Road? Because it, it technically is a planted road for the city. And they said no, because Topeka Road is the only public access road that gets around to those other lots, like lots, uh, uh, zero, one oh four, twenty, eighteen and zero.
Right, all these in here.
Yes, correct. So that's, that's their only way to, to access their property. And, um, and, and Topeka Road in, down on the, the overlook peak, uh, right where your pointer is, like I, I've, it's not even on the flat part. It's all kind of
Oh, right, yeah.
On the steep side, so it would all have to be developed. And that I'm sure would be a very costly endeavor.
Yeah. That's what I was wondering. This, this lot in particular is the one that technically doesn't have frontage on anything else. It is owned, these are owned by the same?
Right, adventures out, adventures out west, yeah.
Because this one, I was thinking, okay, well, this, you know, you could keep this, right?
Yeah, that's already
Abandon this, but this is the problem lot, it seems like.
Right, because that's, that's where I, I need to approach the city and see if we can work something out with those owners to maybe, you know, buy an easement across the bottom part of their land. The other, o- only other option would be to try to develop that portion of Topeka Road that goes below it.
Right. I mean, I guess the other thing is technically, it's a, it's a right-of-way. So you could still develop a trail on it.
Well, that's correct. We could.
Because you have this half, would, you would, you know, would be the city's right to do so.
What, and you know, actually, and, and in front of that property zero, that really funny shaped one?
This one here?
Yeah, yeah. That's city property where Topeka Road runs, runs off. That, that's because the city owns that, that particular piece of property.
Oh, yeah, I think I did notice that, yeah.
Yeah. So it would just be, we'd have to drop down and, and create a trail below that, uh,
Just this one, and then we could come up here.
Right, and then, and then that yellow portion is, is that little road that, that
Right.
Developed for that, uh.
Yeah, you can kind of see it. It's not perfectly in the
Yeah, and, and it, yeah, and it used to be a nice trail, but now it's kind of a road, so that's, that's the, the emergency egress now, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this would be the one. Yeah, that was the one that I, I was like, well, I mean, if they were to develop this, maybe it wouldn't whole parcel together, then maybe it wouldn't be a big deal and they don't technically need that access. But we can't predict that for this, you know, this private property owner.
Right.
So, but you can see even the, you know, the map already shows, green would be if this was vacated, right, half goes to this parcel, half goes to that parcel. And what's nice is if this is vacated, this technically could become all park property. I mean, it can anyway, because it's already city property.
Right.
So And then this is, this is city property and this is city property. So one of the other things that came up is with the creek walk that's getting, oops, getting developed here. Is there a way to access from the creek walk up to the site? Is there a trail through here, Danu? We were trying to
No, but you see, if down there are thirteen eleven, that green parcel thirteen eleven, yeah, open space, OSEF just purchased that property when they got, when they got Serpentine Drive, and so that's where I'm, I would, I'm hoping that we could develop a trail up there that would connect up to, uh, uh.
Maybe come up to Creek Walk and then up?
The, the Manitou Springs Parks and Trails map shows a little green trail.
You know what, I think I'm wrong. I think I'm wrong. I think that thirteen oh two is, is the chief gusher. So if, if we find, if we find Serpentine Drive, there's a, a parcel of land they call the Whale's Tail. Oh, you know what?
Heard that.
Yes, I don't think that that's on this map yet.
That's this.
Yes, 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 correct. So see where the, yeah, that parcel right there, and then it connects up to that other parcel zero?
Yep, right here.
Uh-huh, yep, so that would be onto our property there, so that would be our way to get up to the flats.
Right, we were thinking, I know it's steep, but obviously we could get some switchbacks in there and get a connection maybe.
Yeah, so that was my hope. Yeah, so that, that's I know that's, that's gonna be a hu- another huge project, but but that would be the other way to, to connect up to that park, which, which is when we did the creek walk for that section, I, I was really pushing for access to a bridge, footbridge to get across Fountain Creek that would access on that pro- our property, so we could develop a trail there. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, that's exciting, because we were trying to think about future connectivity and all the comments of how are we gonna get up there? And that would be great if we could plan for something like that.
Yeah, I think there was definitely discussion in the in-person of, you know, they some people prefer not to have this as an access, and there was, you know, people who do prefer this as an access through the neighborhood, just because it connects right down into, you know, the main part of town, so that, that definitely came. the main part of town. So that, that definitely came up. So we just wanted to, we kind of wanted to step back for a minute and, you know, like, while, you know, we're focused on these two parcels, I think the conversation was very good and, you know, kind of like, let's back up a little bit and see, you know, everybody really excited about the project, it seems like. They want this to be used and they want it to be safe and they want it to be maintained, but obviously the more ways to get there was important to a lot of people, it seemed like, so. That was, that was helpful. So any thoughts on, I know we've kind of thrown a lot at you, but anybody, why don't we stop for a minute and just um, take any questions, anybody has that on what we've presented so far or questions on some of the analysis or conversations that we heard during the in-person meeting?
Hey, this is Chris.
Hey, Chris.
Thank you so much, Robin and Mia, for um, compiling all the info.
Yeah.
Um, and sorry, I don't have my camera on, I'm not feeling great, but. You know, my takeaway from that event um, was really that it's important for this project to center it around the community. And make it, like you said, accessible for the community, whether it's how are you getting there or, you know, what? Just, yeah, just centering the community and not centering like the tourist experience or um, you know, the people that are gonna stop on their way somewhere else. So I thought that was really important. And I think that if we center the community, it will be a nice park for anyone to enjoy. So I think it will please the wider audience. You know, by doing that. Anyway, I hope that made sense.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, Chris. That was definitely part of that dialogue at that meeting. And I think one of the things too, or a couple of things that came up was just the concern about how close it is to the highway and how accessible it is from the highway. And, you know, concern about vagrancy or people hanging out or people making it a rest stop. And so those were, you know, I think those are very important considerations on developing the park. Placement of, you know, parking, access to parking, the restroom, does it get locked? You know, those kind of things. We had kind of a quick conversation just to download with Jillian, because I know she has another meeting tonight, um, just to bring up some of those uh, conversations that were had. And um, you know, she had some thoughts too of, you know, and it, and it came up at the community meeting as well, like, can we have a gate that gets closed at that parking lot at whatever the park hours, right? Is there a way to, so that people aren't hanging out there at night, doing things, you know, that we, that make it feel unsafe for others? And um, she, she agreed that I, that that probably is a good idea, you know, thinking of how we manage that. Is there, you know, is the parking paid? Was something she threw out? Or it, can you have a resident pass or I don't know, you know, something like that? So those were some things that we kind of had a conversation about on Friday. Um, and I think definitely things for this group to consider. So we'd definitely like to get your thoughts on, on that as well.
So hey, this is Jan.
Hey, Jan.
Mia, Robin, and of course Danu and everybody, thanks for this evening. Um, I think it was very helpful to have the input. And I really would like to focus on the connectivity tying in with what uh, Chris said for the community and um, highlighting and maybe even goosing or pushing for that Whale's Tail connection sometime in the future by highlighting that we anticipate that that will be a way to get in. And then um, with the Topeka Avenue, I think it's still gonna be used as a trail, so maybe not emphasizing it, but the connectivity is gonna be certainly important. Um, the second thing I'd like to emphasize too is the sustainability and long-lasting um, qualities. And I think focusing too much on water features will be counterproductive. I don't know. And, and then the third thing is, uh, one of the um, participants mentioned something about on the helipad, maybe having a labyrinth um, made out of something that's permeable. And I don't know if that's possible with uh, the surface for a helicopter. But I think that'd be a nice feature to add. It would be artistic, it would uh, be something that could be meditative and be maybe more efficient than what we have in Wheeler Park, although I don't want to abandon that. So just those thoughts.
So I'm, I'm gonna chime in just for a second and say that um, the fire chief said that anything a- anything under eighteen inches high and no loose items within that landing area would be acceptable. And so we were kind of picking Jillian's brain and we were brainstorming some ideas and something she mentioned was utilizing that space as maybe like a little trail loop of some kind and have just a soft surface trail through there and it could connect to maybe the north corner of that park where views are really beautiful. And um, making it a little more seamless into the rest of the design and even possibly in showing that space is a little bit more active instead of a helicopter kind of helicopter only space.
And I, and it would take more, probably more money, but I know that you could do some kind of pattern mosaic in the form of you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, which I think would be a nice addition to it, but that doesn't mean it's possible financially.
Yeah, I think the, that was definitely a big conversation was the helipad, do we really need it? Why is it there? Um, and that came from both online and in-person. So that's something Jillian's gonna check again with the um, fire chief. You know, we, we obviously, what Mia just shared was what we had received before. Um, we know it's been used for previous wildfire fighting events, so um, as far as we know at this point, it's still needed, but she was just gonna circle back and see if there's any other parameters to think about there. Um, I think somebody had their hand up, it's Chris.
Um, basically, I just wanted to say about the Topeka thing, um, is that yes, it's a public, it's a right of way, right? So I, like Jan said, I don't think we can really prevent people from using that. Um, and as a hiker, you know, I'm always looking for a loop. So it's like you would go up Topeka and then down the Whale Tail. And then you'd come back to town or, you know, the other way around, but then it's a nice loop. And people would use it that way. I'm sure of it. Um, and about the parking, about the arm, you know, to on I went from going, shoot, let's maximize the parking to now I'm on the minimize the, after hearing those concerns about the, you know, people that are just gonna stop and do untoward activities, um, you know, on one extreme, you could sorry, there's something weird going us, on outside my house. Um, like you could just have the arm lowered and then you know, like the gate and then just if people have a code or if there's an event going on up there, then people can get the code or you know, and really limit the parking, but then people might just park on the helipad, so. You know, I don't know. How to manage all that.
discourage that with boulders along the perimeter. Um, so they can't get in there into the helicopter area.
That would probably be a good idea.
That's a good point, Chris, about a lot of people commented about the less park, less is more in that kind of res- retrospect with the parking.
Yeah, and then it kind of makes the parking really more centered around people who have accessibility issues versus like anyone can just go up there and park there, but you know, and kind of thinking about, there was a really nice event, um, for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I wish you guys could have been there, you would have really liked it. It was a beautiful event and they there were some elders from the Native American community that um, said some prayers, did some blessings and renamed some rock formations that you can see from the site. And that was, um, it was really great. And I think, you know, for an event like that, then you would want um, the parking to be available for people who really need it, you know, that can't walk up there. Um, and so anyway, again, centering the community, who, who do we want this to be for?
Yeah, that parking discussion definitely came up. And I know, I think we've talked about it even when we developed these concepts, right, of how much parking is appropriate. Um, we do wanna make it accessible for everyone, but we also don't want it, you know, to take away from park. You know, the park features and amenities that you can have and experience that you can have up here. So we were, I think, Chris, like you said, a loop trail, you know, coming off, you know, coming along here, we can have a trail, it's flat right through the helipad. And then, you know, switch back and get us down past that one little parcel and connect it over to the Whale's Tail. Um, definitely seems like an opportunity. And, you know, then how much parking? It was a conversation, Mia, we were talking about this earlier, is what's the right amount? And you know, typically we have some thoughts on parking based on what amenities are here. Um, the amenities that we've talked about aren't huge, you know, other than when we're thinking about larger gathering, which are more special events or something like that, where you might have to make other considerations for you know, car pulling people up or, you know, renting vans to, you know, from wherever they are. Um, but I don't think we need to design for that necessarily, but I don't think there's any amenities here necessarily that are big reparking driven requirements necessarily. So I think we definitely have some flexibility there. And one of the things we were thinking of, you know, we also heard that there's really a great view kind of at the corner over here. And maybe we're, you know, we really try to give other points along here to take advantage of some of those great views, um. And again, it could be, as long as it's fixed, you know, and it's outside of that helipad area, I think we definitely have opportunities for that as well. Um, and making more trail connections. And, you know, maybe the parking wants to get a little smaller and you really start to take advantage of this entire park space, even though this is, you know, you wanna probably minimize improvements here, but you could still, you know, make it feel a little more connected and purposeful there. Um, and kind of buy back some more park space. The location of the, oh yeah, go ahead, Danu.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna check our uh, I, I, it seems to me that in planning in our ordinances or something around parks, there was, there was a, a while back, I remember reading something about parking. You know, the, the minimum required parking that was needed for a park. And, and I don't know why, but eight to twelve spaces sticks in my head.
Yeah, it's probably based on the park size and we'll, we'll check that. And relative to we were talking about running, you know, based on the amenities that we're gonna put in the preferred plan, we can make some recommendations between the code and that as well.
Right. And, and I'd be happy to talk to planning a- about that too.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so anybody else have some thoughts about parking? I mean, obviously, we need, we do need to make sure we're meeting code, but I'd be curious what everybody else thinks.
I like your idea of, of, of minimizing parking and using that parking space to put more park into that space.
Jan agrees.
Anthony, you have any?
I was just thinking, I mean, obviously, I guess whether, how we work out the trail access question makes a difference, because without the trail access, like how else do you, and if we're not prioritizing parking, like how else do you access the park? Like Serpentine is not a very pleasant way to to access the
Anthony, do you, have you, have you ever been up on the, up there on Manitou Terrace?
Which one? Um, I mean, I went up on the flats with you that one time and we walked the, walked there and I think we walked a little bit down the hill. Um, that one time.
Along that road there? That little itty bitty construction road?
Yeah.
That would be the, that would be the foot traffic access.
That right now would be.
Yeah. Yeah, over there, yeah.
I mean, and I think, I mean, obviously, and if the trail connection is too good, then, and there is good parking, then the more people are gonna be parking there and kind of walking in to do other stuff in Manitou. So it's like kind of a just balancing all the different uses, I guess.
Well, and that was one of the things, the concerns that came up is given that this is currently parked, paid parking to get shuttled up to Rainbow Falls, are people gonna circumvent that and just park over here in the park? And so that's where, you know, is there more of a controlled parking situation here? Because if it's getting used for that purpose, it's not serving the community in the way I think is hoping to be, so.
It seems to me that it would be in, in the Adventures Out West's interest to be proactive, to protect the free spaces and then to be able to prevent people from parking there versus paying money to park in their lot.
Yeah, you would think, yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
And you can certainly put, you know, parking signs that say park, parking only or something. No, it's just, not everybody listens to signs, of course, but.
I think we go back to um, where's the primary focus? And as Chris was saying, there's so much that we would like it to be community focused, not exclusive to community. But if it's a community focus, then parking isn't um, huge amount more based on ADA and that kind of stuff. So unless there's a special um, indigenous peoples need, that there wouldn't really be access to much parking there. Is, is seemingly a new perspective on it.
Um, other comment or discussion that came up was the, the composting toilet location and um, I just wanted to bring that up. There were some people concerned about how far it is to walk from here to there. If you have young children who need to go to the bathroom. There's concern, you know, if you do usually need maintenance access to those or truck access, so that's something to consider of that location. Um, others, you know, brought up, of course, if you move it next to the park amenities, we all know they don't always smell great, so it may not be, it may not be good to have it too close to those either, so.
This is, this is not a huge park. It is not
It's not huge, no.
I don't think it's necessarily an issue.
Yeah, I think too, just, it looks big on plan, but if you go up to the space, you realize it's, you know, only a few steps from one side to the other.
Yeah, Robin, I think that, you know, basically it's the ease of the city workers to you know, clean it, change the toilet paper, whatever.
Unlock it at night.
Lock it, yeah, I don't want them having to schlep through the park or whatever. Um, and also like, I almost think of this park as like, it's like an extension of open space almost. It's like if you're going up there with a little kid and you're, you know, or who, you know, I don't know. Just kind of plan on roughing it a little bit. Just kind of plan on roughing it a little bit. So I think even having a bathroom up there at all is pretty cushy, so. I think it just matters what the city workers, how, like, just make it easy for them.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. I mean, it's oftentimes a park of this size wouldn't have a, a bathroom facility in it. At the same time, it's nice, given that it's a little more remote from the other parts of town. Okay, um, do we want to go through these top ten amenities and. Or twelve, I guess, and just get everybody's thought on. Yes, move forward in the plan, um, no, or maybe consideration?
Yeah, uh. Yeah, cause, cause would you go ahead and, and then take. Take the top twelve that were chosen and incorporate them in, into one of our designs that were the. Some of the two, the two popular designs?
That would be the intent, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I also would kinda. Well, I don't know, you know, I'm always thinking about money and, and, and trying to build it. Actually, actually, you know, with this whole discussion, I'm realizing that. I think what's really important first is that we get just the basic bare bones of a master plan. And then, and then once we get the master plan approved, and I don't know if that, that would have to include such detailed stuff, such as. You know, a gate block off the parking lot, you know, uh. You know, all the, all these little minutia little details that came up. Uh, which, well, actually, mostly it's just the gate, uh, or if we could just still just do the master plan and then add that in later if it's needed.
But yeah, I mean, and we can always put things like potent, you know, potential. Or something like that, so it's not necessarily, you know, it's based off of need or something like that.
Right.
Um, that way it's there, and if you need to add it, it's there, it's fine. And I mean, honestly, if you had to add it, it's kind of like, it's a maintenance management. At that point, yeah, you wouldn't need, necessarily need to modify the master plan, but it is good, so, you know, future people understand like, oh, that was discussed. And that was considered.
Yeah, yeah, cause, cause at, at first I was thinking we could do the master plan and then, and then go into construction documents. But now I'm starting to think, after we get the master plan, maybe we should shift our focus to that trail coming up the Whale's Tail. And try to, try to have some connectivity to our master plan.
And I'm wondering if we could have six to eight of the top twelve. That would be most cost effective and sustainable.
Yeah.
With the others as potential add-ons as time allows and money allows.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's kind of creating that space that people wanna be in and then. Yeah, go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi, how are you both?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Thank you so much. Um, I didn't chime in with the parking, cause everybody was staying what I thought. I wanna say something about the sound therapy instruments. Um, so we have something similar at UCCS, um, we have a really great open space, it's out at Heller Center. And there are these sound things and they're the most frustrating, annoying, you're out in this beautiful place and these damn musical things just go off. And so I am so against those sound, I'm just, I know we have good cars, you know, but I just that. If we're, you know, and with the metal structure, like, if we could not do some of those, I know they're number two, but just being in those environments where it's. I just have experienced firsthand how frustrating they are, but that's my two cents.
Yeah, no, that, that's exactly what we want here.
Rebecca, maybe, uh, do more of a sound barrier instead of, uh, the, the sound device?
Hundred percent, you know, so more tree, I know trees are hard up there, but just, you know, with some of those berms or something would be awesome. But rather than that, because I think, again, what Donu's saying with our funding, it would be great to fund a few other things that are integral. And that's, to me, isn't one of them, but.
Okay, anybody else thoughts on that?
I would tend to agree, I'm kind of. It's like you go up there and you kind of want to be away from people and. Or at least feel like you're away from people, and then if there's people making noise or whatever, it might be kind of annoying. I think a lot of people live in Manitou because we can get into nature really quickly. And be away from people, and so. Yeah, I think the community. Even though they said they like it. It is a cool thing, I just don't know if that's the spot for it.
Okay, so maybe that's just, we'll kind of see whether that should be really integrated in there and. Okay, well, let's move on to formal gatherings, oh, whoops, sorry, I put that with the wrong one. Formal gathering space. Um, alright, so that's, you know, we, I think we. This definitely seemed to be pretty favorable in the discussions we heard in person. Uh, again, it's not huge, but it is a nice place to have a little event, um. And something too that could even be rented out potentially. For a little bit of revenue as well, so anybody have any thoughts on that?
Something that just occurred to me, um, I'm wondering if. That formal gathering space or even on the composting toilet, if the roof line could eventually. Accommodate some solar panels, if that comes along someday.
Or doing rain collection. Would you mean they'd have to be solid, solid roofing though, huh?
Yeah, and I think we did hear that, that's desired anyway for all these structures, just to provide the best shade possible, so.
We're gonna have to really make sure those panels are really stitched down, cause of the winds that come up there too.
Yeah, and they ha, they have that, that, that can definitely be integrated.
I don't like the Gabian seat walls.
Well, it didn't make the top twelve, Dinu.
And other people didn't like that either.
Alright, um, any other thoughts on formal gathering space or composting toilet?
Composting toilet by the, but the accessibility for the workers.
Okay.
Probably closer, kind of by the parking lot is, or, or, you know, near there, or, or. Utilize that extra park space and put the toilet there, I guess, the composting toilet there.
Not that we get to totally control our winds here in Colorado, but preferably. Not upwind, I guess, right?
Another thing that was said while we were at the meeting, I noticed was for the gathering space. A lot of people said that weddings up there was something that they would think would happen a lot, or at least often enough. To have the formal gathering space and especially if it was positioned in a way to be looking. At the best view possible and try to stay away from looking at the tops of the houses. So I think that was something that was mentioned a lot while we were having that big conversation.
Yeah, that's a good point, no, that, that did come up. I think it might have been mentioned in the online too.
Being mindful of the neighbors, I think, is a, a big thing.
You know, um, this is Chris. Um, I've been up there a lot and we were, I was just up there with Donu and Rebecca and we were looking over the edge and. I'm not exactly sure what those community members. Were referring to because there aren't, there's, there aren't any houses below there.
Right.
Um, it's all open space. So, um, I mean, you can see houses like across. You know, like you can see the ones across town, but you can't see.
Was it these houses?
Maybe, I mean, but they're pretty far down there, you can't see them.
Yeah, yeah, they're really, they're really far down there. They're, they're, they're on Serpentine Manitou Avenue.
Right.
I think they were also saying that because in some of the designs, we had a viewing deck that was kind of on the. Um, south side of the site. Yeah, right there. And if we had a viewing deck, and I think in one of the designs, it was kind of dropping down a little bit in, um. Grade, that it was looking closely at some homes, but. I think that's just what they were thinking, if we were lower down, or if there was a viewing deck right at the point. Then that's when it would be closest to the homes, but.
Yeah, and even that grade change, we're only talking, I mean, it's like a couple feet, it's not, it's not substantially down the hill, so. It might have been them not really fully understanding. As well, how that was located. Cause we wouldn't build it in Topeka, you know, Avenue anyway, right? It would be still on that parcel.
You, you know, this is Donu. I really don't wanna put any kind of structure right up down there on the south point. Um, I, I would really like to keep that as open as possible. I think that's why I like your design too so much, is cause it was just totally, it just had the, 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 the rock Karen sculpture. And like a prayer circle, and then it was just wide open. There, there were no structures in front of the prayer circle, the.
Yeah, we liked that comment too, Dinu, and incorporated, well, we kind of shifted some shade structures to make sure that view wasn't obstructed.
Yeah, um, yeah. So the viewing deck, I'd rather see that be somewhere more on the west side. Somewhere, yeah, or anywhere along, anywhere along in there.
Yeah, or what about like, right, sort of, isn't there one here on this design, um, like kind of behind the. Four directions, like in the, the Karen?
Oh, down here?
Yeah, it's set back a bit, it's not at the edge, but.
This one, yeah, set back, um, from the sculpture.
Right, like Donu, like, kind of where we had, where we were all standing in a circle. The, the part of the circle that was on that side.
You mean where, where the, the, the shade structure is right now, you mean, Chris?
Yeah, is that too close for you or?
No, I, I, I like it okay over there, you know, I'm just talking about directly in front, like, you know how we all walk to the very tip to. Look at Bog and Magog, I just wanna keep that whole area open, like the way it is.
Totally.
That was a really nice feeling of openness.
Okay, um, alright, hawk nesting, we started looking into this a little bit, we were gonna. Um, reach out to one of our environmentalists that we work with, or, um, ecologists, sorry, that we work with and just. I know some of the questions came up of, is this appropriate to have hawk nesting, um, platforms, so. We'll continue to look into that a little bit, but anybody have any issues with having those as part of the. Project, if it seems to be the appropriate location?
I, I, I'm not opposed to it, I don't know how. I don't know if it would get used, because I did see that comment of what kind of hawks are gonna wanna nest by the highway.
Yeah, we did do a kind of a quick search on that and they actually don't mind, apparently, but. Um, but we need to dig into it a little bit more too, like, where is it relative to, you know. The highway, the, you know, the edge of the ridge and.
Where they would actually be hunting and.
Yeah.
I mean, ma- maybe we could put it down below, below Topeka Avenue or something, uh, on the, on the. What is it, the, the west, southwest, southwest area?
Kind of in this property here.
Yeah.
It is city property, I mean.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's all open space.
Yeah. That's a good idea. Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue to look into that. Alright, custom shade structures. Came up, so I think custom shade structures and just shade structures with seating, those both were kind of in the top ten, so. Not a surprise, people do like shade, permanent shade, that's something we hear all the time, so those weren't really a surprise. But anybody have any thoughts on those? Other than just keep them from the edge? And so they're not blocking views.
Solid roof for potential. Water collection and solar integration.
Rock formations was another one, just kind of embracing the landscape and landscape formations. Any thoughts on that?
I, I like that picture, but I, I don't think we have any rock formations that quite look like that up there. So we have to create our own?
Right, yeah, it would just be kind of utilizing stone that's local to, you know, create. And what's kind of nice about this, and obviously, this is, you know, this is just an inspiration photo, it doesn't necessarily directly relate to the site, but. Uh, what's nice about this particular image is that these rocks are actually used to help create. A great landscape for plants to be successful in as well, so it kind of. It kind of works both ways, it adds a little bit of structure and you can kind of use them to help sort of create rooms when you're in this rooms. If I, you will, like, maybe they're, you know, sticking above grade. Two, three feet, maybe four in some locations, um, just so you're not, cause it is a small site, like. You kind of can use them to help create rooms as well, and then also create some, uh, a little more variety for. Successful planting as well.
And sound barrier.
And sound barrier, yeah.
You know, we're gonna, we're, all those rocks that they're using along Serpentine Drive to keep people from parking alongside the creek. Once, once we get the Creek Walk Trail there, we're gonna have all those big rocks available to be. To be integrated up there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We claim them for this.
Yeah, cause I, I actually, uh, there were some leftover from Soda Springs Park, from the, the slabs that you guys cut. For our seating, and I took those leftover ones and I put them in Wheeler Park and made an, another little seating area there for labyrinth. And it came out really nice.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, integrated art, I think there was. You know, in general, embracing the community, the art, artist community, um, but also the concern about vandalism. And what happens if, you know, who maintains the art were some questions that came up. And, you know, I, I think there's two ways to look at art, there's, you know, things that can be added over time. And then there's, you know, things that are sort of artfully integrated into the landscape design, um, that. You know, are using landscape materials and stuff, so. Um, I don't know that we, it's just definitely something to consider, I don't know how the city does that right now for art. If art is vandalized and how that's maintained, do you know, Dinu?
We do have, uh, our sculptures that are all distributed all around Manitou Avenue and in our parks. And so far, maybe because it's right in town. They haven't really been vandalized that I know of, there's, there's maybe a couple pieces that might have been vandalized, but. And when you said that, I immediately thought of somebody starting to, to spray, you know, with their paint spray, like they did it up. Up at Rainbow Falls, s, you know, spray painting all over the rocks.
Maybe, maybe Josh has.
Maybe, maybe Josh has a comment about that from coming from. Public Works.
Yeah, Josh?
Yeah, um. We do, uh. We haven't seen a lot of vandalism so far that, of the art pieces, like a lot of vandalism is like. What we've noticed is like, uh, when they name the art piece, like the little metal, um, identifiers. That's usually what they seem to vandalize a lot, is they rip those off. Um, or occasionally, not a lot, there is some graffiti, you know, that is sprayed. On some of the art pieces, but other than that, we haven't really encountered a whole lot of vandalism, which is good, which is not. We do have one structure that, um. Is kind of just falling apart, but I don't think it's from vandalism, I think it's just from, you know, over, overuse, wear and tear.
Hey, Josh?
Yes.
Of all of these components that we've been talking about in our top twelve, do you see any offhand that are? Really gonna be, uh. In- intensive maintenance beside the bathroom?
Besides, besides the bathroom, um, I don't, maybe number one, just because it's the. Um, garden, and I, I'm just trying to figure out like how to get water up there.
Well.
Oh, we did talk about that, actually, um, that did come up at that community meeting, we talked to Jillian about it yesterday, and you might know Danu. Uh, apparently it is getting repaired next year, Josh, do you, are you aware of that? Okay, so apparently that's been, cause it's part of, and I could be, be misspeaking, but I, I believe it's part of. Fire and it's, it needs to be repaired. Does that Mia, does that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I remember her saying.
Okay.
So I, I believe it's budgeted, it hasn't been done yet, but it will be done next year, so there would be water. Available for this site is our understanding.
Great.
Yeah, which is, which would be huge for sure.
Yeah, I don't see any like really, any other issues, uh, maintaining, you know, the part. Of the top twelve other than the composting toilet, because. Um, it is a composting toilet, so there is gonna be a lot of smell, because it's not gonna be probably, you know, cleaned. As often as like a normal restroom would be, you know? Allowing it to be able to do its thing and compost, you know? That would be my only concern.
Yeah, I think the, uh, they've come a long way with ventilation. Uh, you know, I was, I did a, a camping trip up at Eleven Mile Canyon and. I was impressed with their, their vault bathrooms in there. They were, I, they, they were clean, they didn't smell, it was impressive. So, I guess we'd have to research and really look into a really good composting toilet, eh?
Yeah, for sure.
And I think Jillian knew something about that, and, and maybe Mia and Robin do too, but. They really can be efficient, and the big thing would be almost daily, I would think cleaning it. Especially certain times of the year as it's being used, just as far as the sanitary part, not the composting part.
Right, correct.
One of the community members at the workshop got really excited about. Composting toilets, cause she saw a really cool one in Europe, and she sent me some photos. I can share that with you guys if you're interested. Um, she got really excited, cause she's like, I just wanted to share this because you guys are looking at composting toilets and I. Like wood chips on the inside, cedar wood chips to make it smell nice, and. A lot of different things we can look at for that.
Great, okay, so last one was educational signage, or last two, educational signage and Crusher Finds Trails. I'm surprised the trails wasn't higher considering how, how much talk there was about access, but. Maybe it was more of people feeling like that's a given kind of thing too.
Yeah, maybe so, yeah. Hey, uh, uh, Rebecca? Do you have that, uh, picture that, that you took of, uh, of Kui? Kui, I can't remember how the, the, uh, Navajo for the brothers. Can, can you, can you show that, or can you, I don't know how you, I guess you'd have to send it to Robin and Mia. Or something, or can you?
Yeah, I gotta, give me, talk amongst yourselves while.
Putting you on the spot, be ready, right? They, it was renamed the Gog and Magog.
Yeah, they gave it the Navajo name of, I think the Bear Brothers, wasn't it?
That's what Manny had mentioned when we visited with him up there.
I just remembered the first part was Kui, K W I E, and then I forget the last part, but that's, they had a very simple sign. And it was, and it said what it was in, in Navajo, and then there was, uh.
That's the Ute language.
Oh, Utes, sorry, Utes, yes.
We had, we had some Lakota. Tribal teenagers come and talk with us on Indigenous Peoples' Day. That was pretty special, they're from Pine Ridge, Pine Ridge Reservation, if you're familiar with that. Area. But yeah, your, your event sounds pretty amazing.
It was really nice, I mean, we all hiked all the way down by City Hall. We all hiked up Lovers Lane and hiked up that, that social trail all the way up there and. I mean, we had some elders with us, uh, and we just. There was, I don't know, Chris, how many people do you think were there? Oh, you're great, yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't know, I would say forty, fifty people.
So it was, it was just really, really nice, simple. Signage.
That's great. Wonderful.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah, thanks for sharing.
Manny mentioned that there was a sacred tree somewhere in. Manatee Springs that elders would hike from the sacred tree up to. Higginbotham Flats, do you know where that tree is by any chance? Okay, that might be a question for Manny.
Well, was he referring to, um, the tree, the tree of peace that we planted?
Might have, maybe?
I think that's, cause that's where we started, we started in Mansions and then. I think that's what he's referencing.
I'm curious where that is located.
So it's in Mansions, um, we planted it, or replanted last. Yeah, and that's a, um. It's an Iroquois or the Confederacy, um, it's from there, that tradition. It's planted right behind City Hall, there's a park there called Mansions Park.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, so it sounds, I mean, it's, I think we have pretty good direction. But curious if there's any other thoughts on? Things we wanna think about as we move into the preferred plan development? And then I just wanted to hit on schedule as well after that, but just wanna open up for any other comments.
The only thing I would say is just, and I think we've. I think you got the point on this, but, um, for the Crusher Finds Trails to, you know, that are in the park. Just make sure that there is the connectivity there to connect. Manitou Terrace and then the potential, like then across that parking area where it would then. Link up to the Whale Tail Trail. That's just funny, that it's called the Whale Tail, um.
I feel like that definitely, that name's going down right here.
Uh, so that we just plan for that connectivity and that, so that it's not like a surprise layer, like, oh shoot, we have to. Tie this in somehow.
And is that for, um, kind of the Creek Walk Whale's Tail connection as well as Topeka? I mean, I think, I think it actually calls out for a trailhead at the end of Topeka Avenue.
Say, say it again, Jen?
It was, it was on the plans from what I remember.
Well, however, we can make that connection work. Yeah, but. What, what do you guys all think about, about that idea of maybe we shift our, after we get our master plan done up there? That we shift our focus and start trying to work with OSEC? To get that trail built up, up Whale's Tail, so that we start on our connectivity.
I'm kind of fifty fifty, because I'm thinking if we get it there and have the spur. To connect to Whale's Tail, that might be enough to goose OSEC to get going on it. And if we don't do it, they might just say, yeah, we'll get to it, I don't know. I think they have some things with, uh, the Black Canyon. Piece that they're really trying to focus on, so it might be a while, I, I think it'd be best to. Get her done as much as we can for Higginbotham.
You mean, so continue with the, the plan of master plan, construction docs, and then trying to find the money to build?
I think with, I think with our teasing, so to speak, and our reaching out to the community, they always know it takes a while, but I think. Gosh, I think we should do it.
Pair up, anybody else? Thoughts, opinions?
Jan, what did you do? You think we should do what?
I think we should go ahead and get the decision on the master plan, at least in, I hate to use the word phases. But, um, at least the primary master plan and then work on getting funding for it. And get started on Higginbotham Flats.
You agree too, Chris?
I do, and I think, I mean, in terms of the trail stuff and OSEC and whatever, I think that the. Manitou Terrace, Topeka connection would be. Like easier to obtain, like it's just like, it's already there. And I think the other portion, that might be years down the road when. Uh, you know, OSEC has the bandwidth and the park is already there and it kind of makes more sense.
Okay, Anthony, Rebecca, any thoughts real quick?
Do, when, do we have an estimate when that park's gonna be done with the Creek Walk along there?
When, when the, when the park's gonna, say it again?
So that part that you're talking about down there off of Serpentine, like when is that connectivity part gonna be done for the, like the Creek Walk? Exactly, but then I would wait for that to be done before then we try to connect it with the other space with the Whale Tail, I just think. Again, phases, and so I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this project, but.
Okay, uh, at least that, our project we can control. And we, we kind of, we kind of know the givens and everything, so.
Yep, and that would maybe again, like they're saying, encourage the other entities to get more involved quicker.
Yeah, okay.
Do we feel comfortable showing like an arrow pointing to future trail connection or? Just not showing the full trail connection, just insinuating that there's future planning there.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Just to clarify, the access on Topeka is, um, that's a given then, and I mean, we'll be able to mark that and say, you know, to. You know, whatever the name of the park is along that, so people, I mean, that is an. That will have that regardless of what. Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the one difficult part is, is we, we. Are gonna probably have to develop a trail below that private property that is. Is, uh, right next to our property, to, to provide public. Access, so we're not trespassing on their land. But I, I'm gonna try to pursue getting an easement. Because in order for, for that to be a, an emergency egress. People are gonna have to go across the private property in one way or another. Uh, to get out to the highway. Yeah, so.
Are you talking about right here?
Yes, correct, yep.
But technically, it's not an easement because it's right away.
Uh, yes, yes, so I'm talking about up there on the flatland, that's on their property.
Oh, here?
No, right above, right above Topeka Avenue. Yep, right above there, yep, right across there, like, like if we were to continue that line. Where of where our city property is with that weird shaped parcel. If we just continue the line straight across. Uh, their, their property to hook up to our parkland is, is kind of what I'm thinking for like an easement.
Just wondering if you just go on the.
Pretty steep.
Yeah, we were gonna, we're gonna overlay the topo in that area and take a look at it, but. You're gonna have to wedge that into the hill, is that what you're telling me?
Uh, yeah, pretty much.
All right, um, okay, sounds good, but. I think that will definitely, would definitely be great to address the.
Yeah, cause I, I've already, I've, I've already mentioned that to, to some of the higher uppers in city. To say, say, hey, you know, we need to start looking at trying to gain some kind of an easement. Across that private property for our emergency egress exit.
Sounds good, so one, one thing, so I wanted to touch on the next steps for the schedule, so we're here at this, um, special meeting with you all. Well, the next step again is to develop a preferred, um, concept plan. And, or preferred master plan, and we would, we have a, another special meeting. On November eighteenth per our schedule with you all, and. The reason is, is we're trying to hit that last council meeting of the year, we, we chatted with. Jillian about this a little bit, cause it did come up through the community, um, in both in-person and online forums. About, you know, how they just are hearing about this and, you know. Kind of concerns about are they getting a chance for enough feedback, and so I did wanna bring that up to this group. Just for any thoughts, we don't have any plans to go back to the community. Um, and obviously this would be, I believe this would be a public hearing, right, Danu, on the seventeenth? So there would be public feedback at that point, um, if they wanted to. But I did wanna throw that your way, just cause it did come up as, you know, is there another opportunity for them to weigh in? Um, you know, we don't have that in the scope or the schedule, and that would put us past the end of the year. And I believe that would impact funding for Manny's sculpture. And then the question is, if you wanted to do that, is there flexibility for that?
That was, that was her one shot, that was her one shot.
So anyway, that, that came up, I went, I mentioned it to Jillian, um, she may talk to you about it too, Danu, but. Um, I did wanna bring it up with this group as well. Um, I did wanna bring it up with this group as well.
Um, well, Parab, so, so basically, Robin, we're talking about another, a meeting on November, November eighteen? And, and that would, that would be kind of to review the final kind of draft proposal of the design. Based on all of our feedback and stuff.
Yep, so we have that as the preferred master plan that we would review with you. We have, um, if you have changes, we've left time to have, make, um, quick changes. Do one more final review with all of you on December second. And then our packet would be due December ninth to City Council, so we can hit that seventeenth meeting. So per the schedule, we have two more meetings with you to get kind of through this process, just to make sure you have all the opportunities. To weigh in before we go to council.
Yeah, and actually, December second would be our regular meeting anyway, if we have a.
Yeah, we finally hit one.
Yeah, so, so Parab, what do you think about? If you, if, what about if we skip November's regular meeting and just have our special meeting with Mia and Robin on the eighteenth? Uh, let me get back to my calendar here, um, cause you're saying the next meeting with you guys will be November eighteen. Our regular meeting is November four, but I really, I really don't have much going on for, uh. For November fours meeting, Parab, not unless you guys do, um. So that's, that's an option, that we could skip that regular meeting and then have our special meeting with Mia and Robin on the eighteenth. And then just have our regular meeting on the second, which would also be the final with Robin and Mia for design, right?
Sounds great. Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
All right, I think that covers it. We appreciate everybody's feedback and, um, we'll get to work on the next version of the plan.
Oh, great, great. Anybody have any questions for Mia or Robin?
Final thoughts?
I do actually have one final thought, um, sorry if I'm monopolizing the airspace, um. When you come up Topeka Manitou Terrace, whatever it is, um, and then it turns into Topeka. And then say we get that easement, um. Could the Crusher Finds Trail just kind of skirt the park on the edge? And then eventually, um, connect. To the parking area, kind of a thing, I mean. Cause that.
Like a perimeter trail?
Yeah, would that work or as far as design, anyway, just sort of a design tie-in perhaps?
We can look at that, so basically that trail would come in and you're suggesting, I mean, it pretty much is at the perimeter, honestly. So, yeah, we would make some connection, I don't think we would duplicate the trail, just cause we're. I think they would, I think they would enter the park space, um.
Right.
Is your concern, Chris, related to people making it a through access or?
Well, I guess if Danu was pitching it as like an egress for the neighborhood. Um. If people were gonna potentially drive on it. In the event of an emergency or something, I, I don't know if that needs to be considered or not, but if. If that becomes the reason why we get the easement.
And maybe that's more of, you know, something that connects this way.
Oh, uh-huh.
So it gets you to the parking and kind of stays away from the edge where all the views are.
Yeah, you know, Robin, back in the day when, when they gave us all that land, they did provide for a seven foot easement. Between our property and the adventures out west property. So technically, there's supposed to be, yep, right along there, there should be a seven foot easement for utilities. But I, I don't think back in the day, they had computers and stuff. And I think it was just all on paper and I don't know if there's any recording of any of that stuff anymore. So.
Hmm, we can, we can look into that and see if it is, I mean, if it's not recorded, obviously, we're, we won't have that information, but.
Right.
If it is, we can look into that.
Yeah.
That'd be nice, though.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Cool, thanks so much, you guys.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred, all right, thank you, Parab, um. Let's see, where are we at, are we, I think we covered everything, right, the only thing that, uh, is left to do is to adjourn, right? So we'll see you guys back on the eighteenth of November and then we'll see you again on December second.
Yep, you will get enough of us.
And then, and then you're going to City Council on the seventeenth of December?
Correct.
Okay, all righty, okay, does that sound good to everybody? And then we'll, we'll forego our regular meeting on December, on November four. And, and just meet again on our special meeting for Nov- November eighteen. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you.
Bye, bye.
Good night.